Calling to order the Monday, August 4th, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hannon.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vlani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment, adding item number three to the regular agenda to authorize the city manager to invite the following law firms to be interviewed by city council. Rosati et al., Garan et al., Foster Swift, Hafaly et al.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Okay, Councilmember Baker. Because you were loud. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence and direct your comments to the chair. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your matter needs to be followed up with by a member of city staff, council, or director, you may leave your contact information on the table right outside this door and someone will get back with you. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it's being considered. We have this new timer clock now, so I'm just pointing that out because it's very loud when it counts down and is sometimes startling. So you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. It's open.
Mayor Dean, council, Miles Handy, 14141 Marion, Redford, Michigan, 48239. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the owner, CEO, of Puppygram here in Berkeley and very happy to be here and talk to you about an opportunity I think you guys should take advantage of. We're sorry and our condolences are for Bear, the canine dog here at Berkeley. You know, when I was a township board member in Redford Township, which I was for 10 years, I started the canine program for our police department. So the canine units are very important to municipalities and we at Puppygram, you know, would love to donate a Chairman Shepherd AKC-registered dog to the city of Berkeley. We understand your financial woes and I think that's one way we could help, you know, municipality like yourself without having to go into the taxpayers' coffer. We'd be also happy to give him a bag of dog food a month during his life. So, so just a small token from Puppygram here and understanding your struggles financially. I sat in that chair. It's not fun sometimes, but we'd like to, you know, offer you that, mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Handy. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, July 21st, 2025. Two, resolution number R1425, matter of considering resolution to add Slows Berkeley LLC DBA Slows Barbecue Berkeley located at 3087 12 Mile Road to the Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, Boss Social District. Three, motion number M6325, matter of nominating councilmember Steve Baker as the delegate and Mayor Protem Ross Gavin as alternate to serve as the city of Berkeley representative to cast the vote of the municipality at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by councilmember Hannon with support from councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, please read item number two.
Motion number M6425, matter of approving the BSNA proposal for onsite training and process system enhancements department-wide.
Is there a motion to approve M6425?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
With support from councilmember Vlani. Ms. Van Vleek.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce our deputy finance director, Amy Zarowski, for this agenda item. But just a little bit of a quick intro to it. Amy and the rest of our finance team have just been doing a fantastic job at taking a look at not only our processes and policies and working on amending those and creating ones where gaps exist, but also in looking at how we utilize the software that we have available to us and utilizing it to its fullest extent. There's quite a few process improvements that they've identified, things that will take time to get done, but these are the first steps and I'll let Amy explain all of that.
Thank you, Crystal. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the time here today. Kind of to piggyback off of Crystal's side, you know, we have a very new finance staff. So over the past six, eight months, we have really been taking a deep dive, not only in the finance department and what's been going on there and how we can improve, but also meeting with all the different departments to see what they're doing on a daily basis, weekly, monthly, and how, you know, we can help them with a lot of the manual processes. So we've been able to make a lot of improvements from just utilizing templates and, you know, other things like that, but, you know, the next step is really being able to utilize the system to its fullest. So in speaking with the various departments, also reaching out to other different municipalities to see how they're handling different things, we were able to identify kind of the first series, is what I'm going to call it, of what we'd like to improve on with our systems. And so those three areas that we've identified are within the building department and then our accounts payable module and then also within equipment rental, which impacts both the DPW and Parks and Rec Department and then heavily in finance. So some of these are selfish on my part, but it's also going to improve everything across the city. So as far as the building department, one of the things in speaking with them, one of their main concerns was they've been requesting from the finance department over the past two, three-plus years for various different, either training elements or improved system, like communication between the building department and accounts payable. So I've met with them many a times just to kind of seek clarity in what they're looking for, also talked to BSNA multiple times in order to see how we can, you know, get them out here, what we can do. We've already sent them a list of like questions, things that we want to have best practices as well as additional training, reporting, things like that. And then as far as for accounts payable, we really wanted to just be able to utilize the system workflow. Where each department, so right now, we have an accounts payable clerk who enters in all the invoices for each of the departments. Instead, we will have each department identify a person within their department who will be inputting all those invoices and it'll directly be routed to the department head and city manager if it, you know, meets those requirements where approval is required. And then the finance department would really have more of the oversight, kind of reviewing, things like that, where, you know, give us more time to make sure, okay, well, are these classified properly as well as the, each of the departments, more consistency with how they're tracking their budgets and maintaining that on a, you know, weekly, bi-weekly basis when we're processing accounts payable. And then the last one, which I think is the most manually intensive right now, is how we're, how the DPW and Parks and Rec employees are having to input their time. So they utilize time sheets from module perspective to enter their time, but then daily they have a manual sheet that they have to fill out with the number of hours that they are using each vehicle for that day. So multiply that by how many employees each day of each month and then that all goes to the DPW clerk who consolidates that and then hands it over to finance to process everything on the backend for the equipment rental charges that go to each of the different ones depending on where the vehicles were purchased from and so on and so forth. So that one, I think I, when I saw what they were doing, it was, what in the?
Yep.
So, you know, overall with these three things, I guess that it's kind of a series of what we have in mind, but these we thought were the three that we identified as the most crucial and critical right now. But I mean, it's going to deliver significant value with, you know, the backlog of requests from various different employees, also, you know, just the enhanced controls, you know, and the time that we're actually able to give back to what we're here to do, which is be here for our residents and making sure that they're getting everything they need from us. So, I mean, kind of overall, you know, I think what we've been striving for is really to become more proactive than reactive because I don't think that has been here much. So with that, we would really appreciate your support in this proposal because I think it'll do wonders for everybody.
Well, I can tell you, you have my full support on this and just Mayor Protem Gavin, councilmember Hannon and I, and not to say that others at this table don't care or weren't meh, whatever, but the three of us have been pushing for this for a while now. And I think that things finally came together so that this could move forward. And I do believe that anytime we can use the technology that's available to us to enhance what's being done, and to your point, at the end of the day, you can be spending more time on resident-facing things. I think it's a good thing. I've spoken with Director Listika about that, we all have, about this as well. So it's really, it's music to my ears to hear you saying these things and to know that this is coming because it's been needed for a long time, but I don't have to tell you that.
Thank you.
So thank you for your work on this and for moving this ahead in a very strategic way. You know, it's planned, it's, these are the areas of need for now and then, you know, as that rolls out, we can certainly expand that to other departments with other modules. So thank you for that. Any, councilmember Vlani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you for the very thoughtful presentation that you made. Echo Mayor Dean's sentiments about this is excellent and needed. For our friends listening at home, a couple of clarifying questions. So the first one, can you just reiterate why we would not, because this looks like a very reasonable bid here, but can you just reiterate why we would not be bidding this out to multiple different training suppliers?
Of course. All of these modules are through BSNA, so they would be the one and only vendor that we would be able to get this type of training from. So they're the only ones that know, you know, that system and then also our processes. We have, you know, we have direct, you know, contact to them on a daily basis for support, but they're the only ones that would be able to be able to provide this training.
Thank you. And then my second question is you did a great job highlighting why we should do it. Kind of in the opposite, if we were not to do it, because there is an investment here, what are the costs and risks to the city for not investing in this training, whether it's through processes, errors, anything along those lines?
I think anytime you have manual intervention and anything, there's room for errors. And as much as I or our, you know, our finance team can try to create templates to make it, you know, dummy proof, there's still, you know, a formula goes wrong or somebody adds a line in an Excel file. It's not guaranteed. Yes, it, you know, me and the team doing all of those things has helped a lot to be able to get all the departments kind of, you know, up to, you know, at least what we have been able to do without going to this next step, but there's still a lot of room for error if we don't, you know, utilize the system for, and what it's capable of doing. And I think it's just people, you know, we've, you know, been, whether it be employee constraints or things where that, like that, or not asking the, you know, questions to BSNA of what we can do or what the system can offer. You know, it's, you know, when you have new people come in, they ask a lot of questions. So I'm sure some people don't always like me asking all the questions, but I want to make their lives easier and, you know, we all do now that we have, you know, a full finance department that is here to support them. So this is kind of us giving back to them what they've been wanting and then also what we need overall.
Wonderful. Thank you.
If I could just emphasize the value of time.
Yes.
Because all of these processes, as Amy has described earlier, just the amount of time that goes into some of these processes right now is unnecessary. So not only is there the room for error, but just the amount of time that gets spent on some of these tasks that, which is why Amy is, Amy sees it and she's, I know I can make this easier for everyone, so.
Wonderful.
Councilmember Patterson.
Echoing them, thank you for bringing this forward to us. I do like how it's cross-departmental. It's not just one department getting the training, so I think it's just going to move the needle tremendously, so thank you.
I have more in my back pocket.
And also to echo on that, the first one, the accounts payable, will be citywide. So it starts with finance who then trains and it'll go across all departments, so really it'll affect everybody.
And kind of every version too for that is to have one department as pilot to make sure that we get all the kinks out before we roll it out, you know, to the rest of the departments.
Smart.
So.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, I'll echo my appreciation for this being brought forward and for the opportunity to actually go about getting these benefits and reducing the time that's invested in non-value-add work. There's this concept called wrench time, you know, which is the productivity time. You're actually doing something of value and value stream mapping and all that. And so the more we can do to increase the wrench time of all of our employees as opposed to the manual, like non-value-add data entry kind of stuff, again, it reduces errors and it helps us focus more on what we need to do. Do you have an approximate timeframe for when the training might be and are all three things handled at the same time or will they go in sequence? Can you tell us a bit more about that?
Yep, no problem. That has been changing as we have kind of, you know, needed to bring this to you and obtain the approval. Originally, it was going to be all onsite either January 5th or January 12th, that week, and kind of have two to three days for each of the different, you know, modules. But payroll will now be remote, so that has reduced our costs because originally the proposal was about $15,000. Now it's a little over 13, and that's because for payroll, that piece of it, which is the equipment rental, that will be remote. And that is the week of January 5th and then, sorry, one of the other modules is January 5th onsite and then the other one will be January 12th onsite.
Nice, thank you. And how will this be, or what are our thoughts on when we get new employees down the road? Will they be trained internally or will we have like an ongoing opportunity to do a once-a-year annual kind of true-up thing or how do we handle future employees?
I mean, I don't think I have that 100% figured out, but I, so one of the things I know we've been doing with, you know, our new treasury clerk is documenting, you know, all the processes. It's a perfect time when you have somebody new coming in to document everything, take screenshots, you know, things like that, to provide desk procedures or building out things that we already do have in place. So I would think, you know, now that we do have a fully-staffed team, that I think we are fully capable of doing this training for future employees that come on. So I don't think we would necessarily, you know, and that's one of the things I really am, you know, trying to promote with everybody that I talk to is just putting those desk procedures because you don't know who's going to come next. And I've always tried, you know, I want to make somebody who comes after me their life easier. So I tried to take as many notes and document everything, but, so that's kind of how I foresee it.
I think that's very wise. Yep, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hannon.
Yeah, also very excited to see this modernization, but one request I have is look for opportunities to gather metrics, reporting metrics, think about things we might want to report in infographic form, you know, in our annual budget or so forth. I've had questions from the development department, monthly reports, that it's just not easy to draw out with the data as it's created now, so just look for those opportunities as we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M6425.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M6525, matter of authorizing the city manager to invite the following law firms to be interviewed by city council. Rosati et al., Garan et al., Foster Swift, and Hafaly et al.
Is there a motion to approve M6525?
So moved.
Motion made by councilmember Baker.
Support.
With support from councilmember Patterson. Ms. Van Vleek.
So tonight's work session, as all of you know, we had a special work session prior to this meeting where we discussed the feedback that we had received from our reference checks as well as all of our council members' feedback on the proposals that were received. We received eight proposals total and in that meeting discussions were had and we were able to dwindle it down to a list of four of who council wants to bring through for, I'm sorry, for interviews. So we discussed a little bit about the process that that will go through. I will reach out to all of the firms, including our current firm, and we will schedule interviews. We're trying to get them all into the same day and then from there, we'll move along in the process.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Didn't think so. Public comment on this agenda item? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M6525.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vlani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the motion has passed. We have now reached our communications portion.
Councilmember Vlani.
Okay.
All right, thank you. A couple of updates here from the Environmental Advisory Committee. There was no July meeting. Their next meeting will be August 21st at 6:30 PM on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. Also coming up, gardeners beware, the native plant sale will be on Sunday, September 21st from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at our public library. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, we have lots of fun stuff happening with our local businesses. We're welcoming the Berkeley Arts Academy on Friday, August 22nd at 4:00 PM. They're going to have an instrument petting zoo. I'm not sure what that is, but I would love to find out, so you can too at that time. And you can also enter to win a free year of lessons. So be there or don't learn how to play. On Saturday, August 9th, Rewear Vintage is celebrating their 20th anniversary with extended hours, deals all day, and live music in the evening. Check them out. If you are thinking, what on earth could I wear to Cruise Fest, your problem is solved. The Chamber will be selling their annual Cruise Fest t-shirts at the Classic Car Parade on Friday, August 15th on 12 Mile Road, so get in line early and get one of those. They're always a collector's item. And most importantly, save the date for the Berkeley Pub Crawl. It returns this year as part of Bookly. It is a little bit early, right before all the official Bookly stuff kicks off on Thursday, September 25th. Get your sitters because registration is going to be open soon. And that is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you.
Try and follow that.
I know. The Beautification Committee did meet on the 23rd of July. They talked about the Adopt-A-Garden, so that's a program that they're going to be looking for spaces. So all those gardeners that buy your plants at the native plant sale, think about putting them in an Adopt-A-Garden, which more details will be coming soon. They're probably going to start in the spring since the season's kind of late. Landscapes of the year, the votes are being tallied, so look forward to those. There are some chore programs. There's an outreach and volunteer planning to help some of our seniors and disabled landscape assistants throughout our community. So if you're interested or if you need hours for your football team and you're interested, please sign up. I can get you the information of how to sign up to help our seniors and those in need in our community. And it's a lot of hours for our football team. Who needs those hours, I've heard. There's also the street planting outreach. So if you're interested in a street tree, there's still some available, so. And then there's more discussion about the Holiday Luminary Project. They're thinking they're going to do it a little bit differently this year and take over Bacon Park for a lighting ceremony more than curbside, so they're planning that. So busy, busy stuff that we're working on or they are working on. So that's all I have. Planning to not meet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hannon.
Yes, the Tree Board is on their summer hiatus, though resume meetings in September. But I want to highlight the spotted lanternfly that has arrived in Michigan in full force. It's an invasive that can be quite devastating to your trees. They particularly like Tree of Heaven, which is an invasive species you should be cutting down anyway, but it can often be the catalyst that brings in the moth and then it spreads on to other trees. I don't have any easy URLs for that. Just Google for Spotted Lanternfly, Tree of Heaven, and you'll be able to find a load of resources. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on August 11th. They have a request for a dimensional variance for a household on Buckingham between 12 and Edwards. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick notes. The Historical Committee meets next week's Tuesday, August 12th at 7:00. I've heard it's going to be a historic event. And our Downtown Development Authority meets the very next morning, Wednesday, the 13th at 8:15 AM. Stay tuned for developing news on that. For both of those, you can go to BerkeleyHistory.com and DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Norman Vincent Peale who once said, "To be successful is to be helpful, caring, and constructive, to make everything and everyone you touch a little better." And I frame that in the context of August. August is National Wellness Month. An important part of being of wellness is caring for others and caring about yourself as well. Being caring helps bridge divides and encourages empathy. This makes it easier to find common ground and reduce polarization when you find yourself in a climate of fear and intolerance, let's just say. Acts of kindness and compassion create supportive environments, helping individuals feel valued and less isolated. This is crucial when negativity and hostility are widespread. And finally, demonstrating care inspires others to act with kindness, gradually shifting our culture away from denial and greed towards cooperation and respect. So please be kind to someone and take care of yourself as well. And as always, please hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Briefly, for Parks and Rec, the final Berkeley beats of the year will be Thursday at 7:00 at Oxford Park. And the next meeting of Parks and Rec will be August 7th this week at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And for the library, a great programming event, Come Learn About Detroit's Dramatic Journey from Bankruptcy to Rebirth with Gerald Rosen, author of The Grand Bargain, tomorrow, August 5th at 6:30 PM. No registration is necessary. And the next meeting of the Library Board will be August 20th at 7:00 PM at the library. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Van Vleek.
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Christ.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No legal report tonight.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I want to welcome PSO Hugh Williams, who just joined us about a week ago now. He's a recent graduate of the Livingston County Firefighter Training Academy and will start the Oakland Police Academy in a couple of days, August 6th. And then he'll do his three-week medical, so lots of hoops to jump through, but that's why we have the best in Berkeley. So our PSOs are well-trained, professional, and I just want to reiterate the fact that we don't, we have a combined police and fire. And not only is that cost-saving, but each of our, the members of our Public Safety Department have a ridiculous amount of training, which should make you feel secure. Anyway, I do. They know the fire stuff, they know the police stuff and the medical. So again, grateful to everyone and welcome PSO Williams. Public services, I just have to say, nice job outside of City Hall. I was here the day- I was here the day you were doing all the drainage stuff and it was 100 degrees out and you were all smiling. Someone did bring ice cream, it wasn't me, but now to see it all finished and have those planters, it's just, it's nice to drive up and see that, that we have that pride of place. This is a focal point in our community and I think we're doing the best that we can. We took care of that problem and now it looks lovely out there. So thanks to Public Services. The next up on the Mayor's Roadshow will be NACA Local on 12 Mile. It's going to happen in August. We've been trying to hammer out a date, so stay tuned on socials for the date for that, but I look forward to visiting there. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Motion made by council member Patterson with support from council member Vilani. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, August 4th, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.